All right, welcome everyone. It's February 26th. We'll open up our meeting of the Millville Planning Board with roll call.
Jason Mailey.
Um, we'll go here.
Preston Jaskovic.
Pam Williams.
Justin Allen.
Roland DeJalas.
And Pam Maloney, who have been home with us as well. Um, let's get started then. I don't have minutes for us, so we'll just table that for next time. Um, we do have an appointment this evening with um, some folks from 18 Prospect Street. So if you want to come on up.
Yeah.
Thanks for being guys.
Thanks. I know you have some members joining via Zoom, so maybe we could just take a second to tell everyone who you are.
Uh, my name is Sean Scunjo. I, I own 18 Prospect Street in Millville. It's originally an industrial building built in the eighties that was defunct for a span of time.
Thank you.
And then it was used by a well company uh, for a while as a um, their maintenance shop. Uh, then a fire occurred in the building. After the fire occurred, it's that kind of defunct for a while. Uh, me and my partner, Rocco Deo, which will probably be joining us soon, um, purchased the property. When we purchased the property, we came to the board and we filed for a special permit. And uh, for, at the time, the board, we didn't, they were, in Millville, we didn't have any really allocated commercial use at the time. And we worked with the board to kind of come up and the neighbors of the, of that community in that area to work with a special permit to use the, the building. We revamped the building. We got a, a permit by the building inspector at the time, Lincoln. That was fully signed off. We occupied the building as Raz Hope, me and my partner's company. After that, we were approached by a marijuana company that was already in a host agreement with the town. And they came to us.
Hello?
Hello.
Rocco?
Hi.
Hi. Can you hear us?
I'm sorry, interrupted, but uh, we um, yeah, we used the building and then they uh, and they started to use it.
All right. So we were using, so we were using the building. And then the marijuana approach, company approached us. At that time, before we signed the lease, we came back to the special permitting and wanted to make sure that it could be done. They, you guys granted us a minor modification to that, uh, initial special permit. We started, they started the process on their end to try to get the building up and running. The landscape had changed with the marijuana field, as I don't know if you guys all know, but in the past year. And their funding had not come through. We had to go through a lengthy eviction where at that time, when we finally took possession of the property, our electrical and plu- uh, electrical and the finished plumbing was not in the building. We then applied for a permit. There was some discrepancy with the building department about use of the building. And they tried to, they are trying to essentially say that our special permit is no longer valid. And I approached the board to ask if it's not valid for what reason.
Just to introduce myself, I'm Eli Leno. I'm an attorney from Bernstein Sure. I'm working, hired by Raz Hope LLC about this. Um, I think there are a few pieces of this that come down to uh, Supreme Judicial Court cases in Massachusetts law generally. So if I can help answer some of those questions as we move forward into the facts, I'm certainly happy to answer questions.
So I guess if we could get this going.
Yeah.
Is the special permit still valid or is?
I think that's the question on the table, right?
As far as we know, but we're getting conflicting evidence from the town.
Yeah.
Was there ever a request for an extension?
The, it, we, we, in our eyes, the permit wasn't fully enforced because if you look through your packet there, there's a signed off um, building card in there that under the modus operandi of Millville at the time, we did not get occupancy permits. We got signed off building cards because it wasn't a new structure. It was a renovation of an existing structure. And I, and after that, we occupied the building, which I would deem that to fulfill the onus of my permit.
And I'd add, I think that's a perfect piece to get into the law a little bit. Between your zoning bylaws, which I think is um, chapter 100, section 606, and then 40A, section nine of the state law. And then, so from this Bernstein versus Chief Building Inspector case from 2001, um, the general idea is on the merits, we review other special permit as modified has lapsed. Ordinarily, a permit may not be ware, excuse me, warehoused indefinitely. And that's what the, the law on its face says as well. So that if they had received their permit, either for special permit for use or special permit for construction, you can't just sit on it and then say, we can come back to this whenever. We can do this when we're ready. It's usually the two-year lapse, but the board can condition it however they want. But they pretty quickly, after receiving that original broad special permit, finished the work, started, you know, fixing the fire damage, and then shortly thereafter occupied it. Rented to their, to themselves as part of a construction warehouse. Can you, can you tell us a little bit about the use?
We, we're, we're, we're a, we're a commercial development company. We, we took a chance on Millville. My partner's not from here. I'm from here originally and developing Hope Street. That was going to be our home basis. And uh, we occupied it while we were hoping to up rent some of the other bays. And that's, then the wrench in the gears was the marijuana company came in and they, again, they had a contract with the town. So we thought, okay, maybe this is where we go. But, but at that time, we had already occupied the building and again, had a signed off building permit. So we kind of complied with.
To speak to that briefly about, again, there's the time limits for getting started, which I think you can look in your permit file and see pretty clearly that Raz Hope LLC took advantage of what was granted to them and started work, did these things. Then there's a bit of a delay where they're deciding how to use the building or going to rent to this marijuana company, which doesn't end up happening. The new addition to the permit to allow marijuana was an amendment to the existing vested permit. So it doesn't wipe that out. It's not a new permit. It doesn't stop or rescind that permit. So that's still in play. So then you have the question, which certainly would be fair to wonder, how long can you kind of wait here while they're dealing with permitting the marijuana thing, which doesn't end up going? And if the marijuana company took off and went gangbusters and have been there for 20 years, then they want to come back for this. I think you have a good opportunity to say, hey, that's, that's probably lapsed. Why don't you come back? We'll take a look at site plan and a special permit for it. But the law has a bunch of cases where if you don't miss that initial lapse period, you have the use and then you take a break. The case that um, I think most captures this and is illustrative of how long you can kind of take here is that Lobester Building and versus Town of Bellingham, so just down the road, has this case where they spent 18 years on a special permit between building the first four buildings and then building the fifth building. Supreme Judicial Court says 18 years was fine because they vested it from the beginning piece. They have those rights. The town had granted it and nothing in that permit said it lapsed or expired if they didn't do certain things on the phasing. So under the law, I think they're in a good spot to go back with the use that the town already said they could use, that they started using a few years ago. And again, 2000 was the first permit. You start building.
It was 2020.
So it's 2020, excuse me, I'm losing.
Actually, it wasn't 2019. That's a, that's a era on the, so if you, if you go to the back of that packet.
And that's what I meant, 2000. That's me misspeaking.
Where Diane, where Diane Lockwood released the
Yep.
appeal, which would be 2/25/2020. And then the date on our permit as finalized would be 2/22/21.
So February 2020.
Yep, from February 2020 to 20, that, that was a clerical hour on the town spot.
That was for the
Original special permit.
The original one?
Yep.
So the point is, and again, it's been only a few years here from 2020 or 2021 until where we are today.
Four years.
It wasn't, yeah, but they used it for a while and then they were, they came back, they did things right. They worked to permit the marijuana use as an addition to that special permit, not a replacement for it. So we're still here under the contention that we're still permitted special permits for uses that are harmonious with the neighborhood. This is a building that's been here for a long time. This is a use that's harmonious. It's, it's not going to change. Again, I think this is something that a special permit, certainly I don't speak for the board, but I think would validly be issued again, having been issued previously. But there's no reason to make my client go through that hoop on this because it's still valid.
Do our permits expire though? Do our special permits expire though? Because you can't have something in perpetuity. So there need, so where is it? It's two years, right?
Usually two years.
Yeah. So why don't you just apply again?
Because it's not expired. An expired permit would consist of not use, no use of.
Non-use?
Non-use. I have two, I have two, I have two years to comply with the permit.
Okay.
So, so as of that, the permit didn't, doesn't expire in two years. If there's non-substantial use, which is in there, it says non-substantial use, which there was substantial use stated by the, the building permit, as well as our occupancy there. That, that, that's, that essentially is the definition.
And I would say there's a difference between lapse and expire. They lapse if you don't take advantage of the rights that were granted to you by the board. Once you have it and you're using this building, which they did, it doesn't then expire.
So when you talk about occupancy permit, I'm asking education.
Absolutely.
Is, if the building was inspected today, would it pass for an occupancy?
We, we actually went for a building permit and the problem that has arise was that Joe essentially said that we didn't have the right to use that building in that space for those, for, for those purposes. Which was news to us because we went through this process. We have a, a signed lease with a current renter, which is a excavation company. That's a rather utility large excavation company that wants to use it as their service facility.
Same use that they were using it for prior to trying to permit this for the marijuana.
I own an excavator. It's literally the same, same use. And at that time, Joe had posed a question that's, that with the IEBC, which is a building department code, which is a separate entity, separate situation. And I had called the state on that situation and there was no clarity because we did not get past this point. So that, she told me that there was discussion about whether I was even able to be permitted to use it there, which I thought I was. Then when I reached out to Dylan, I believe, I reached out to Dylan and asked him, and I didn't get substantial clarity. That, and there was no fault on Dylan's part. It was just, it was not substantial clarity for me, which I needed to move forward. That's when I asked for a meeting with the board.
Yeah, and we're here.
It's not an adversarial situation. We're here because we thought we were making an investment in the town. We thought we went through the proper channels. We thought we were extending the same use and um, business as we were approved to be there. And then the question of the validity came up and it, that's when.
Yeah, I, I remember the project. And I think the building looks great. I, you know, I, I think it was a great property. It was one of probably my first special permits, being on the board. Learned all about, you know, getting the special permits for the different kinds of things that you can sort of like offer to potential sort of like
Set limitations on all of those?
And things like that.
Joe, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I went through the records that the town has and I kind of did a timeline. So in 2019, property was purchased by your clients, right? So 2019, uh, was December 4th, they pulled the permit, repaired the roof, garage doors electric. That was, yeah, December 4th, 2019. The permit was finally signed off on February 22nd, 21.
The premises approved.
2/20/22.
They'll look at the bottom where the, where the final inspection is in the blocks.
Yes, but that's when the permit was pulled.
Yeah, that's what I got, right here.
2/20/20. You said 2019.
2 when? 2/22/21?
2/22/21.
3/2/2020. Full permit approved at the top of the permit.
This is the building card.
Yeah.
Yep.
Date issued.
Yes, but fully approved on.
Full, final, right here.
Yep.
That's the dates I just gave you. 2/22/21.
Okay.
So February 3rd of 2020, the planning board approved the special permit for a variety of things. In that decision, if you read it, it kind of lead you to believe there was a dumpster company going in there. Because it talks a lot about dumpsters being left on trucks, so forth and so on. The uses that was listed out are the uh, uses allowed in that zoning district. February 10th, uh, they did the site plan review, which was also granted. Then on December 28th, 2020, a modification came in to use it for marijuana. Uh, that was approved. And the question I have right now, just sitting here listening, they said they bought the building, they occupied the building, then they went and got a marijuana company interested. But if the permit for the roof and everything was signed off on 21 and they had come in for a modification in 20, when did they occupy it? That's my question. We'll go on with the town. On January 24th, they did a site, site visit and I walked in, the electrical and all the wall panels inside were, they were taken down.
What year was that, sorry?
24. Okay. And on January 31st, 24, they submitted a permit to finish the bathrooms. That was granted. In that the permit, use group was listed as an S2, which is storage. On February 5th, I received a letter that they wanted to change, they wanted to cancel that permit and change the use. Uh, I'm sorry. February 5th, I sent them a letter informing them that the owner, a change of use was needed and that interceptors and so forth, holding, if you're going to have overhead doors according to 248 CMR plumbing code, you have to have oil and gas separators.
On a new structure.
On
Or a structure that's changing use.
Let me finish. Okay. February 9th, a letter was received requesting that that permit that they had for bathrooms be voided out. A new one opened now under an S1 group, which is, has to be done with a change of order through the building department. That's a change of use. So if you look at the timelines, on the first order condition that was granted, on line 11, it says it has to be done within one year. They missed the date. On the second one, item 8, says one year. They missed the date. Under 40A, it's a two-year on a special permit. That wasn't that either.
I, I'm not sure where we missed the date because a, a permit doesn't become active until after the 20-day appeal. And if you look at the 20-day appeal, it's signed 2/25/2020 by Diane. After that, I got a permit approved as a final of 2/22/2021. That leaves me within one year of the thing to the final permit. At, at, at which I also might mention, we were in mid-COVID and we still got it done. And, and, and also, um, just another thing, that, that is a little inaccurate how it went. We, you told us that you would not issue the permit in S1. You would issue it in S2.
No, it's on your application, S2.
I understand that, but you said if we permitted in S1, you would try to make us do changes to the building. My partner filed for the permit in S2. At that time, you called me in here and said, I want to know who, you, when we went there, you said, I want to know who's using the building and for what uses. And I asked why, and you said, because they're going to need oil-water separators in here. And I said, Joe, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Pre-existing permitted use.
Permitted use. And you said, no, it's not. At that time, I called Adele, the state building inspector, and I asked her about that. And she essentially said that there was nothing in writing. At that time, you gave me something in writing. I did not have occupancy to the building. I realized the clerical error that we made in the permitting and I asked to resend that permit and file for the permits in the correct application. That's, that's exactly how that went down.
Marijuana isn't even allowed in an S1 group. It's an F1 group, okay? So, I mean, this thing's been all over the map and it's, when I talked to you guys, you told me that you had the right to do whatever one that was on your list that you put in there and including the building code. Building code, the town has no say over. That's a state.
I'm not, I'm not saying they do. We're here to discuss whether my special permit is valid.
Okay.
And it, which I was permitted to use the building. I understand you are not happy with how it is. And I, I don't want that to be a confrontational thing. I want, I operate a business, another business in town that I've had no complaint in the 20 years I've been there. I, I, I wish to operate another business in town, a, a, a commercial facility, which I wish to have zero complaints for the duration of the time it is there. Uh, I, I'm, I'm not sure, again, how we got here, but I, I'm just asking the board as to whether my special permits are, are.
Right. And all I'm doing is presenting what I have as far as board goes, okay? As to what I see as the areas that was missed. So. And again, like I explained to you, it's the use of groups within a zoning district.
Which we have the use groups in that original.
Can I finish?
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry.
Use of groups are there so you can put stipulations depending what the business is. You can't just say, okay, no matter what it is, in this whole area, everything's the same because it's a different type businesses. And that's what the intent is. It's just like the use of group within the building code is for fire-related industries. So if you have something that's more flammable or whatever, that's why they have the different use groups. Same thing with the planning board. What you use as a, as an excavating company is not the same as with marijuana or whatever. And that's the whole point of the whole thing.
I agree entirely with his assertion that the change in use and the different use groups have different concerns and you from a permitting board need to grant things under the certain regulations such that, you know, harmonious, not more detrimental, et cetera. But where we lose sight here is that permitted properly starts the permit, doesn't lapse. It's within the two years. I don't, I think that's inarguable at this point from the, the record as presented by everyone. And then there's a break where they look to permit something else. Had that gone forward, had the marijuana been successful, there would have been a change of use, at which point various things may or may not have been triggered about what you need for building code, plumbing code, other local regulations from your bylaw that I'm, I'm not sure of because that's not the fact pattern we have here. So because that didn't happen, we have the false start with the marijuana permitting. They're just trying to go back to the use that was properly permitted, commenced, and is still adequately permitted. So there's not a change of use there. And again, had they done the marijuana, had they done something completely different, all those other codes would likely be triggered, but we're really just back to where we started and hoping that the board, upon reviewing these facts, et cetera, can make a finding that yes, you have a permit properly, properly granted, recorded. Here's what happened. You understand the TikTok timing of how this has all happened over the last few years. You had this dalliance with the marijuana company, doesn't go anywhere, and you are right back. And that's sort of the finding he needs. So again, another person working in Millville can get back to work and we all know where we are and that we're properly permitted.
Is the um, is the interceptors, separators, and holding tank, um, I guess for, for gas and oil, um, part of the allowed uses of the original special permit?
No, it was not in this. It created a pre-existing non-conforming. Okay, a lot of buildings, my personal building down here does not have that. It's been a garage for 100-plus years. So when, so in order during those uses, it creates a pre-existing non-conforming condition. So to, to tear up all the floors in that garage, put in oil-water separators, you're talking like $70,000. We have an epoxied floor at Hope Street, at Prospect Street, I'm sorry. We have an epoxied floor. In our lease agreement, it explains that any spill is to be contained immediately. We don't want a contaminated property. But the fact is that it, we also have to be somewhat cost-acknowledgable. We, we lost a substantial amount of money just trying to, as, as far as the town as well, trying to be in business with this marijuana company. We're go, we're trying to go back to our original approved use and the oil-water separator is a source of contention. But that's not, that's a, a source of contention with the building inspector and the state, which we've, I've had communications with. It's not, this is not, I'm not, not trying to skirt something or not communicate with something. I'm just trying to build, use a building or and/or confirm that my existing permitting is still valid. And we're just trying to es- essentially use the building for what its intended purpose was. I'm not, you know, we, we made the investment in the town and then we, we're not trying to, we made the investment in town because we believed in the space and now the thing that we feared about making the investment in the town is coming to fruition. So we're just trying to move forward with the project.
Joe, I think you had something else to say.
On marijuana, the plans that was submitted for that, and I stated it in that sheet, uh, that states on it, that's an F1 use. That's from the engineer, whoever did engineering. So.
None of them.
But we didn't use that use is the point here.
What was that?
We, we didn't go forward with that use. Again, I'm not disputing that marijuana is a different use code under the building code.
If you submitted plans that said F1, you came in for the modification, you got the host, host agreement, and then.
We didn't get the host agreement. That was already in place before we even got into
Yeah.
business with these people.
That was a potential tenant.
We, we, we came, they were, they had come to the town prior to us and had been.
With a different location.
With a different location. And then the, the location, they came to us. We then approached back to the town and said, hey, is this something you guys want? Everyone agreed that it was something they wanted. We moved forward to the detriment of us. We lost money there. It wasn't, the, the town, we lost out. It wasn't, and we didn't, and if you look at the law under the IEBC, which you're referring to, it's occupancy. If, if it has occupancy, even Adele, the state building inspector reaffirmed that occupancy is the key word. If we have occupancy in the building, which we did after we got our initial special permit, then if it changes occupancy, if you pull a permit for something and it's not occupied, if you pulled the permit for this to be a salon and they shut the door and then there was no salon in here and they opened up the door, this, this, this never was occupied as a salon.
But that, that deal was never occupied as a garage because your, your building permit says you finish in 21 and you have the marijuana people in in 20. So I mean, I don't know how you can have a garage there.
My building permit was.
With a garage in the doors. I just showed you. It's signed off.
On 20, 21, yeah. And our, our amendment to our special permit was
In 20.
In 20?
Yeah.
21. The amendment was in 21.
Do also just want to mention that the building code and the use stuff is, is secondary to the special permit being active. And certainly that's not something that this board, it's not in your purview. It's important certainly, and we're not saying that you're making a decision on this one way or the other, but I don't want to get lost on the piece that.
Can I get a, can I ask a question just so it gets answered? Why do we, why do we want that oil separator and the sewage tank? Why, why is, why is Joe requesting that?
Okay, now oil, what is, okay, what an oil separator does is if there's a spill in a new building, usually in a new building, the floor is pitched towards the doors. This is not that case. The floors are not pitched to the, and then usually it's connected to a, a city sewer. So there's a tank that it goes into. There's drains across the front of a door, then there's a tank that it goes into and it separates the sand from the, if there was washing involved and or oil, large oil spillage.
Why is he trying to prevent an oil spill? Why do you think in that area?
I understand it totally why. I don't want an oil, is there any reason that anyone would think that I would want to contaminate? That's exactly, exactly. I'm not, I, I don't think that the, the legitimacy of oil content containment is, is invalid. I'm saying that, that this particular property is not, one, again, it's in my lease. I, I'll put oil containment uh, kits next to the doors. I'm not, there's no power washing permitted there under my lease. There's, it's, it's a maintenance. So if there would be, have to be a spill, it would have to be hundreds of gallons to make it out the door. You know, if anything, it's contaminating my property. I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to contaminate my own property.
I would just point out that with things like the building code and these provisions, as well as zoning and many of the other codes that affect land use in general, they're prospective for a reason as opposed to retrospective. We, we all know things, the fire code, for example, sprinklers, whatever the case may be, good thing to have in a building, inarguable, but we don't make them go backwards to existing uses in older buildings unless you do certain things that trigger you in them because in part, we understand that it's a huge cost. You didn't design around these things. This floor is flat. If there's a spill, it's in place, they'll pick it up, they'll have the kits around it. Whereas a modern building is built in a different way and there's a reason we can make this. And I'm not even saying that the new code and the new building idea isn't better, but it's not what we have here. So it's, it's just a huge financial hardship if we have to, if we basically behave retrospectively on something that is supposed to be prospective.
And there were provisions in that on the original use, certificate of use?
In the original, no, that wasn't brought up because it was used as that building before. We were just, we were literally taking a building that was used for, it's like my building. My building was a car dealership down the center of town here. It was a car dealership before that. Before that was a bus depot. I'm just trying to use it for the same use it was always intendedly used for. I'm not trying to change it.
This is just a conversation.
Yeah, 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 I'm not, I'm not.
When you guys did that amount of work to that building, wouldn't it have been required to bring it all up to code?
And that, that may have been a foresight on the previous building inspectors thing, and I don't know. There wasn't a, it wasn't like we built a building.
Yeah.
We didn't build a building. We took a building that was, I, I, I wish I brought the pictures of it. It was, if anyone knows the building from before, it was, we, we removed seven dumpsters just from the parking lot. Seven dumpsters just from the parking lot. And that's not even the interior demo. That was just, and, and alls we did was skin the building, new roofit, we made an investment onto solar on the top of it. You know, we, a- again, we just essentially rehabbed the existing building. We didn't try to change the footprint. We didn't try to add nothing.
I'm not sure where that code provision came into play either.
And as far as the original site plan that was approved for that permit, all of that work was completed?
All of that work was completed.
Dylan, do you have any insight you want to share?
Yeah, my question is, um, in this minor modification narrative, um, that was written by you guys, I think, it says, um, able to lease the building in summer of 2020, lease up the building in summer of 2020, we were seeking to permit the, permit the building for contractor landscaping, storage, and supply, auto truck repair, and storage. So
That was the original permit.
So who was leasing the property in the summer of 2020?
We occupied it.
You occupy, your business?
Our business.
Okay. So you had your trucks in there?
We had our trucks in there.
That was my question.
Well, we're obviously not making a decision on this tonight, right? So should we get our council involved?
We can do that.
And that way?
We can ask them. Yeah.
I remember.
At this?
Go ahead. Rocco?
At this point, yes. Uh, at this point, we're just looking for clarification. We want to get this done fairly quickly if we could and move on and keep it in harmony with what we've been doing. You know, and hopefully the town, the planning board would see that, uh, that's what we're trying to do here.
So if I understand this right, are the planning board's scope of this question, it's not anything to do with any of the?
Do we think that the special permit is still valid?
Invalid. So I think that's a simple question to get our council involved with. Or?
Or is it our decision? Like?
Your decision.
It's our decision.
It's your decision.
We're not trying to be adversarial. If it's going to be adversarial, that's not.
There's really no decision.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, not to like.
With the, because once it's, I don't want it. I just, I'm trying not to.
This is just a very new board, so they want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 and I'm not.
Looking at the, the town, talking to the towns.
Yeah.
You know, council.
And we didn't do none of this without.
Not to look at court, we're just looking for, you know.
And none of this was done without all the neighbors. The neighbors all, you know, this is not, this is not like something that was, we tried to slip in there. All the neighbors were notified. The natives were excited about the, 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 the area being not a spot for kids to be able to come in and, you know, this, I, I'm not, again, we're not, um...
Yeah, the, the permitting file's relatively voluminous for a short, it's a five-year span here for what we're looking at. There's a fair amount of documentation about what happened and where we are. And certainly if it, if you need to talk to town council about this before you can make a finding, I guess I'm predisposed to understand that, but I do also think that with the dates and, and what's in your file, you probably have enough information on that limited piece to make the finding that the use was properly started and, and can continue. And again, I will reiterate, that doesn't, you're not finding or ruling on any of the stuff that will continue talking about the building code.
We understand. Um, being on the board when this came to us the first time, I remember having a lot of discussions with you about, like, how do we make it so that this doesn't have to happen again?
That's, that's, because we were trying to, there was no commercial space in town.
And you were looking to find somebody who could take the space.
And, and we were trying to create a commercial, usable commercial space out of something that was historically.
That's why we wanted, that's why we wanted several uses.
Yep.
Um, so that we didn't have to come back to the planning board every time we changed tenants.
Yes, I, I can understand that, but I can also understand from a, a safety standpoint why the building inspector is concerned.
Which is a, which is a separate issue.
Entirely.
Absolutely.
Other questions the board have?
It's not necessarily, because the concerns I have is that Millville does not have municipal water. You have all wells in the area. So a spill could cause great harm to that area. Okay? And that's where the planning board comes in and sets stipulations. If you're going to run this type of business, then you have to put these safety, safety devices in place. Okay? And that's the whole idea of it. And that's my concern is that if these wells get contaminated, out of no, no error of theirs, a truck pulls in and it breaks a line overnight and leaks fluid everywhere. What do you tell the neighbors?
But if it does that in the parking lot, it's the same thing.
Well, that's, that's another issue then.
Well, that makes sense that when we bought this building, there were 55 gallons of homes of oil inside. It was a little, we cleaned everything up. And there was nothing that was spilled outside.
There's 20,000, there's $27,000 worth of epoxy on the floor to make sure that the floor never gets stained again and/or is impervious.
Like I said, that, as far as the oil-water separator, that comes under 248 CMR, which is the plumbing code, which dictates that. They don't want to put it in, they can always go in and file an appeal with the plumbing board. And see if they say, you don't have to do it. But it, that was my concern is that if you have overhead doors, you have four overhead doors, it says in there, you gotta have it. You went from a S2 group, which was storage, according to what the, the description of the property was.
You never got occupancy under that use group.
I'm saying before you got it, it was an S2, okay? It was also pulled up, I think, in some of the tax records as a 400 code.
400, manufacturing.
Manufacturing, okay? So that's what's there. It's been that, never changed. Now you're changing it to something else, so. With respect, I gotta, I gotta leave because I have another appointment I have to be at at 7:00, so. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
What was that document?
Yeah.
Yep.
This is just, um, the, uh, Department of Revenue code, and then these are the accessory cards. Your next copy if you want.
That'd be awesome. If you want to just email me at, it doesn't have to be right now.
Can only make a copy of Kinder and Skins.
That's perfect, okay. That's what I get for trying to be agreeable.
What other questions the board have?
I'd just like to reiterate that we're not trying to skirt the building code. We're not trying to, we're trying to, we, we hadn't a use for our building and we, we have talked to the state building inspector. I initiated the contact with the state building inspector. Joe did not initiate that contact. I did. I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing there. I also am a businessman. I do not want to have an exorbitant cost in a very hard-to-rent environment. This, this, it's not, it, no, no one's like, I can't, I, I, I'm a, I was born here. I was born in Millville. No one's like, I can't wait to move my business to Millville. You know what I'm saying? I'm, I stuck the.
Wish they were, if anyone's watching.
Well, I, I, and that's, well, some people are trying to literally right now. And we're, and this is the reception that we're getting. This is part of why I took a chance on the property, thinking that I could maybe do that, fight that fight, but now we're in here again, I feel like fighting a fight to use a property in which we all agreed upon at one time was a proper use for the property, including the neighbors. The neighbors were not excluded on, on, on the conversation. This was not a one-sided conversation.
What other questions do we have? Comments?
Is, uh, I have a question. Is the board prepared to tell us tonight if we're, uh, our active permit is still active?
Weren't we very clear on that we were making?
Just a discussion. We're not going to vote today on anything, but if you want to just give clarity of what you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that idea?
Yeah, um, we are not going to vote today on anything. We said, yeah, this is just a discussion. Um...
Okay, I was asking the board.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we don't have a vote. We're, we're not taking a vote tonight.
So if there's a no vote, does that mean that our special permit is still in existence?
I think we're.
Because we're kind of like in a limbo area where if you're not telling us it's not in existence, technically it is.
Well, when is the next meeting?
We have, we have a party that's ready to move in and we're putting them off. We're going to lose this, this doesn't work out.
Rocco, their next, next meeting's in two weeks. Do you think the board would be ready to maybe make a finding at the next?
Make us lose a tenant.
But that's not.
I know, I know.
Not fresh at all. It's just that, that's.
No, I, I, I understand. That just adds to the financial problem of the situation.
I'm not prepared to vote on this right today, so.
We're not, we're not going to vote on this today. I thought we were very clear about that in the first place. So we just kind of wanted to hear what it was that, that you had so that we could kind of talk amongst ourselves and, and figure out if we wanted to get anybody else involved.
Provided was very helpful in us forming a decision, but I don't think that's today. I don't feel comfortable doing it. Okay. Only one voice, so.
But we can, well, I think we had kind of talked about this beforehand when we invited you guys in, that this was just a discussion. I think it's on our agenda to have a vote, correct? Yeah, even if we wanted to.
We're in a position where we're about to lose this lease. Is there any way to have a special meeting on this? Should it be in two weeks?
I suppose that's up to the board if you think that we could meet earlier than two weeks, but I know that's not always possible. Plus, if we needed any other resources, we would need some time.
And how long does it take for us to put this agenda on the website or post the agenda?
We can post the agenda in two days.
Okay. So does anybody else want to meet next Monday and we'll just?
Would we hear back from council on this by next Monday?
That would be my hope. I'm going to reach out to them tonight.
How does that sound to you guys if we could?
Certainly appreciate you being flexible on that.
That'd be, that'd help.
Definitely appreciate it.
So just as a note, seeking counsel, it seems to be as, it's more of a looking for a way to invalidate the permit. Is that, is that what we're doing here?
No, I just.
Looking to make sure, personally, I just want to make sure that we're, we understand, we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is because this is going to set precedent. And I want to make sure that what, what it is that we do in this situation is what we're going to want to do in the future. So I would like to have an extra set of eyes on it.
Us are new and have not been through this before, so we want to make sure, as Pam said, that it's done correctly.
But no, I'm not looking to invalidate it.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, because it doesn't, it just seems that, that I know.
For me, I'd like a third party, and this is just me speaking, third party that is as intelligent as this young man is here.
Yeah.
About this stuff, just, just like when you do a peer review.
Mm-hmm.
Same thing for, that's like, at least that's how I feel about this.
Okay.
I'd like his opinion because at the end of the day, we sign our names, so we make a vote, we're responsible. And if we've done something wrong, it didn't take advantage of that council. That's just.
Yeah, so we're, we're kind of like on the hook of, you know, making sure that sort of like the, I guess, chain of occupancy is intact, right? Because that's what you were saying, sort of defines this whole thing.
Yeah, I think your questions and you have all the, the facts are basically undisputed in front of us. I think your question for council is, did this lapse before they occupied the building?
They agree that it, it has not lapsed.
And again, I'm confident that this person will find in what we've presented you.
They can reference the cases you've mentioned if possible, you know?
Yeah.
I just want to hear it from our side.
Certainly if council, um, who I may or may not know, depending on which firm you is, wants to call me, I've already done a bunch of this research. I send case sites. They'll make their own. I'm certainly not going to help them read these things.
Just due diligence.
But I already did the legwork on this, so happy to share.
I mean, in general, our board is not looking to make it harder for anyone to
Now they gave you the permit.
Process, yeah. We gave you the permit, we gave you the minor modification. We're willing to work with, you know, whatever it is that we need to do to make it happen if there needs to be a waiver or something at some point.
I remember swapping parking spots for drive-throughs and stuff and entertaining, like, other manufacturing trailers on the property, like, we wanted that to happen.
Yeah, that's like.
We, we were behind you, but certainly.
And we appreciate that because we, um, I feel that we were treated very well by the planning board.
Yes, we were.
So.
Yeah, we're looking to continue that.
Yeah, we just, again, we just want to do business in town. That's, that's really, essentially.
We want you to do that too.
And we want to be in harmony with the rest of the town too, and that includes Joe. So we want to make sure that the building department is satisfied, the planning board's satisfied, and you guys are satisfied. And right now, we need to make sure that it's all.
I agree with you, but they're separate issues.
They're separate issues, but we want to make sure that what we do doesn't affect that.
I'm not asking for any of Joe's opinions to be picked out by council. I just want to look at the timeline and make sure that we're still in compliance and that the permit's out. That's it. That's all I'm looking to do.
Thank you.
Joe's world is Joe's world and he can, you know, whatever he needs to do is not, anything in our purview.
Understood.
Anything else we can answer before next week?
I don't think so, but if anything comes up, we can have Dylan reach out.
Get your contact info.
Yeah.
I can reach out to you.
Forbid I ever have a business card with them.
You can be loud if you want.
If you have it, I'll send you an email. Thank you. All set for tonight?
Alright, yeah.
I think so.
Good.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you all very much for listening and
Thanks for your time.
Look forward to being back here and talking to you next week about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think that's all for Zooms.
Most of our agenda. Alright, um, jumping around. I know we have some folks from CMRPC here. Come on up.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
They kindly spent the entire day with us, I believe.
They did. It was so much fun.
It really was.
Love days in the field. Uh, so for those of you I haven't met yet, hello, I'm Sarah. This is my colleague Carrie.
Hello.
We're from the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. Um, which I hope you're all familiar with. I know Pam is. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Um, so Pam Maloney and Dylan came to us a few months ago, um, thinking about this economic development plan, and we were able to fund it through district local technical assistance, which is basically the town's money to do fun little projects like this that we hope will kind of spiral into some initiative. Uh, so we're kicking that off today. By going around town, we met a bunch of people in Millville, got a sense of, um, the topic area, which is kind of basically Main Street, Central Street area. That's been studied in the past by CMRPC and other firms, uh, as an area of big interest for, uh, hopefully some economic development in the future and, and kind of as a downtown-ish area for the town. So our next steps are to continue talking to as many people in town as we can. So if you have anybody that you think would be interested in talking to us about, you know, what direction they want to see Millville go in, how we can make more things happen, uh, our doors are 100% open for that. Uh, and then we're having an event on March 23rd.
March 23rd, 10 to 12.
10 to 12, open to anybody, anybody, anybody that wants to come. Uh, we're starting at the senior center and hoping to do kind of a little walk around the neighborhood. We like to do walks just to, to get natural opinion, you know? Get out in the field, see like what, what are we feeling? What do we want to preserve? What do we want to change? Uh, and then go back to the senior center for a discussion, and that will guide the plan that we're hoping to finalize by June, uh, that will set out some top strategies for, um, you know, how to get some more community building going and what potentially we could do for regulations and, um, just from the staff side of the town to improve economic development.
Very cool.
Yes, this is very exciting. We're thrilled to have you here. I think this is going to be a very fun project. We'll have to make sure that we do our best to get this out there. I know you guys are dropping off your flyers. I was stopped at a library earlier today and they had one.
Hey!
And the assistant librarian was like telling me about it, and I was like, oh, wait, that's us. Uh, yeah, so I think it's going to be great. We can, I'll maybe reach out to local businesses in town and see if we can get some, some help from the Board of Selectmen and Cable to get this out there.
Thank you. Yeah. We know word of mouth is best for events like this where it's us strangers coming in. Uh, so the more we can get the word out, really make it a good use of time.
Fantastic.
More than three of you come, let me know though, because. So, yeah, I'll make sure we make sure we don't run into any issues with all you guys coming.
Is it possible to share it on social media?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll find some ways to share it on social media. We don't have a, like, an official Millville social media, but like a lot of the other groups do. Library does, Cultural Council does. Police do.
I'm excited. I'm excited. I put it in my calendar.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll have maps and snacks.
Yeah.
Maps and snacks.
Fantastic.
And we'll of course be coming back to the planning board before anything's finalized with the plan.
Okay.
For sure.
In case somebody wants to come that can't like walk, what, what do you suggest?
Uh, so we will have somebody waiting at the senior center for people who don't want to walk. Uh, it won't be awkward, but just like, hey, we could talk here, we could start now, and then people will come back.
Somebody could come, they could come, skip the walk and then just come for the discussion at around.
For sure.
Either way, we'll be starting at the senior center, so.
Um, and that, so it's 10 to 12, so I'm thinking the walk is like the first hour and the discussion is the second hour, so.
Yep.
All right.
So as a board, if more than three of us show up, we have to.
I think I have to post it.
Yeah.
It's all posted if I need to.
Yeah, I plan to come.
Okay, it's all posted as a.
Be on the safe side.
Yeah. We'll, we'll call it a meeting. Yeah.
All right.
Cool.
Fantastic. Any more questions for us?
Learned a lot. I learned a lot already today, so.
Thank you for taking the time.
While you guys are part of the economic development discussion, just on the thing, Sarah Hacker, who does the grant writing, she put in a, an expression of interest for the, the grants coming through, One Stop. Yep, um, so including 181 Main. So we're looking to do some cleanup there or something, start, start the momentum. Just want to mention that too.
Actually think that I may be taking a walk there tomorrow when it's supposed to be warm.
It's supposed to be like 60, yeah?
And there's no wow, foliage.
Yeah, yeah, we saw it today.
Yeah, great. What'd you guys think of your walk through town?
We had a great day. Actually, we met so many nice people.
Yep.
We learned so much about Millville too. Yeah, we have some ideas. I think it was a great day.
Yeah, definitely jumping off points, for sure.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for all of this, and thanks for working with us on trying to get this grant too.
Yeah.
It's exciting.
Oh, that's where I met you, on the DLTA, on physical development.
Yeah.
I know, I knew your face.
All set?
Cool.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. And then lastly, we want to talk about the town meeting warrant?
So I've been with them all day, so I haven't had a chance to print anything out. They showed up at 11:00. We've been out all day, so.
It was a nice day to be out.
Yeah, so I just have to put final touches on, on what I have, and I can send it to you. You can all give me your comments.
Sure.
And that'd be fine.
Is there a deadline that we need to be meeting?
I think they set the deadline last week or something.
Okay.
I don't, I haven't gotten the formal email yet, so I think we're still.
Well, we can vote on it next Monday, right?
Yeah, yeah, we could look at it next Monday.
Yep.
Got work for everybody in?
Yeah, um, if we had to do a, a special meeting on the 4th.
Yeah, 4th.
I, I can do that.
Okay.
We can, um, if there's time constraints for anybody, we could.
It'd be quick, I'm sure.
Try to make it a quick one and not load up the agenda.
Wasn't that the first Monday anyways? Is that our next schedule?
Second, we're second and 4th Monday.
It would have been the 11th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we're good for tonight?
I'll reach out to council and we'll go from there. I'll reach out to Peter and then reach out to council.
Perfect. Thank you. I think that probably makes the most sense, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I know, I don't want to scare them, but we're just, just making sure you guys.
Development and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just that this is not straightforward.
Yep, it's not straightforward and, and, but I, I do feel bad. I do remember them coming to us and them saying, you know, what happens if we change a tenant and whatnot? And we wanted to make sure that, that we thought about all of those types of things in advance, but Joe's right. The use changed and.
Yeah, to be honest with you, and if they were here, I'd say it as just as loud. We told them we weren't going to make a decision tonight, so to kind of force us to do that, no.
Nope.
Right.
We didn't even know about this last week.
No.
So.
Any other updates on planning?
That's it. That's all we have.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then a motion to.
Oh, just right, yeah, sorry, just real quick. So we'll plan on 3/4.
3/4 at 6.
And then we'll plan on 3/11 and 3/25, right? Continuing with our second.
The normal, yeah, yep.
Yep.
That doesn't coincide with the, um.
We'll find out. I have to check to see what's.
Because they changed those.
But if, if necessary, we'll, we'll go in the small room. We'll have a small meeting.
Make it work.
Yeah.
3/25, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Well, if there's nothing on the agenda for 3/11, do we meet? Do we?
We don't have to.
We don't have to, unless we still have the warrant.
Yeah.
But if we take care of it next week.
Correct.
Oh.
Then we can go to the 25th, skip the 11th.
Yeah. I'll put the options out in the email. You let me know.